The next item on our agenda is the Majestic Woods or Sleepy Hollow Plan. And once again, we're gonna give folks an opportunity to speak. We're gonna start with the developer, the representative of the developer, telling us about the plan. And we'll go through the same process that we just went through with the K Plan of lots. So can you state your name for the record to let us know and tell us about the plan?
Sure. Good evening. My name's Mike Wetzel from Victor Wetzel Associates. 409 Broad Street, Swartley, Pennsylvania. And I'm here tonight representing Majestic Woods LP. And we're here tonight for the preliminary subdivision plan for the Majestic Woods development. Majestic Woods is a 108 single-family development located along Sleepy Hollow. And what we want to do is before we talk about the plan, is locate the site in relationship with the township zoning map and the areas around the park. Excuse me. Majestic Woods, as I said, is located along Sleepy Hollow Road. This drawing through here is the Slitley, I'm sorry, the South Park zoning map. The area that's in green is all of the Allegheny South Park area, over 2,000 acres of county park. And the Majestic Woods plan is 63 acres in size. That is located right along through here and is located in two zoning districts. The blue area is the R2 zoning district. The red area is the R1 zoning district. And what separates the two sites is Sleepy Hollow Road. At no time today or in the past has this site been part of South Park and the Allegheny Park system. You can tell by that through the zoning map that all of South Park is in the RP or Regional Park zoning district. As I mentioned, we're located in the R2 and the R1 zoning district. So with that, we'd like to talk about the proposed preliminary site plan. Majestic Woods, as I said, is 108 single-family lots. We have Sleepy Hollow Road right along through here where our property frontage is. Existing bridge that's located through here. It's paved up to this point located right in through this section. And we do have an area that's a little bit more gravel and unimproved all the way through the plan. But what we're looking at is doing a subdivision of this area being the R2 zoning area. Doing a 106 single-family lots in the R2. All of these would meet the requirements of the R2 zoning district. And then we have two lots down through here which is the R1 zoning district. And those lots meet the requirements of the R1 zoning district. We are not seeking any types of variances or modifications. They all meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. In regard to the site, once again, Sleepy Hollow Road through here. What we'll have is two access points within the plan. One in the midpoint that comes through, does an oversized loop area through here. We'll also have a secondary access right along through here. Also creates a loop road system through this section. Then we'll also have a cul-de-sac street that comes down to the county of South Park. South Park's park area is through here and along this portion of the overall site within the plan. We also have open space areas that protect some steeper slopes in through here and open space along this section. And we'll have our main stormwater detention facility located along Sleepy Hollow on the south side of Sleepy Hollow. And we'll have a BMP stormwater detention facility located through here. We've submitted all the necessary reports in regard to stormwater, environmental, as well as geotechnical reports that have been submitted to the township and have been reviewed within the plan. We'll have sidewalks located on both sides of the street within the plan and a sidewalk along Sleepy Hollow on the north side along this section. In regard to Sleepy Hollow, as I mentioned, currently the road is paved up to this point through here. What we'll be doing is doing road improvements, providing a two-inch overlay of asphalt along this section. At this point is where it turns into more of a Red Dog type road through this area. And from this point to the property line area, we'll upgrade that road to township standards with a new road base, asphalt binder and wearing course, and that area will be widened to 20 feet wide. Along the property frontage through the first entrance into the second entrance, this road will be widened to all township standards in regard to road width, 22-foot wide cartway, curbs, and once again also meeting the requirements for the road paving depths. Currently, Sleepy Hollow is a 33-foot road right of way. Will be widened on both sides. It will be a 50-foot road right of way overall within the site. As I said, the plan meets all the requirements of the R1 zoning district and R2. We have received engineering review comment letters from township staff, the township police, as well as the building, I'm sorry, public works. And also we received comments from the township engineer as well as the township planner. We provide response letters that address all of these comments in regard to each one of those review comment letters. And what we're here tonight is seeking approval, recommendation for approval for the just the preliminary, preliminary subdivision plan, excuse me, for Majestic Woods. Glad to answer any questions the board might have in this.
Mr. Wetzel, I just wanted to be clear that I understood that this is, property is private property currently owned in the township, but not in the county park.
Correct. Is not and has never happened.
Thank you.
Mr. Deeser, as township engineer, do you have any comments or questions that you would like to ask?
Sure. We did an initial review of the submitted materials and we created a review letter dated March 14th related to the plan. There were a number of documents that were submitted. I think just to give a quick summary on those documents would be enlightening just for the people we had here tonight how many things were submitted and reviewed. So we did review a preliminary major subdivision plan application. Allegheny County subdivision land development reviewed application dated March 6th. A project narrative submitted for the project. A preliminary post-construction stormwater management plan that was prepared. A transportation impact study that was also prepared for the project. There was crash data appendix prepared by the applicant's traffic consultant. There was also a wetland report prepared and submitted. A geotechnical investigation was also prepared and submitted. And there was also the actual preliminary subdivision plan that was prepared by Victor Wetzel. And they also supplied us with the information and utility company service availability letters to show that utilities were available to the site. So after we did the initial review, they did resubmit and we did have the opportunity to review additional information, which was a revised plan, a revised geotechnical study, a response to all the comments, and then responses to all of the other people that commented on the plan. I will, I do want to say that just for the planning commission tonight, a preliminary subdivision application, our goal tonight is to make sure that they have all the requirements for preliminary approval. And what preliminary approval basically sets the stage for final approval. Preliminary approval makes sure that really that the project is feasible. That all the lots comply with the zoning ordinance, that they have adequate stormwater management, they're completing any other upgrades to infrastructure that they have to approve, that the project from a geotechnical standpoint can be constructed. And then really the final approval, if it moves to final approval, would be all the heavy engineering details related to actually building the plan. So you couldn't actually build the plan with the information that was provided tonight, but it shows you that it is feasible. And then as you move into final engineering or they will come back with any final application, they would provide all of those details. With that being said, I thought I would just highlight some of the major technical issues of the plan as it was submitted. There are requirements in our ordinance for certain information to be put on the plan. They still need to do some identification as to the owner of the land on their cover sheet, on the construction information that they provided. I do mention that the condition of a culvert at the intersection of Stoltz and Sleepy Hollow Road should be documented prior to construction and avon posted to address any potential damage to the pipe due to the development. And I suggested they put a note on the plan to that effect. As it relates to that bridge culvert, it really is, it's a creek crossing that occurs really at the intersection of Stoltz and Sleepy Hollow. I personally investigated that pipe. It's in good condition now. We would document that if this plan proceeds, make sure that it's not, doesn't have any problems during construction. Excuse me. Under stormwater management, they have a large area on the opposite side of Sleepy Hollow Road that Mr. Wetzel pointed to where they're proposing a couple lots on the other side of the road. There's a low-lying area there that was already a pond before. Some of the historical documents show that there was some sort of a water feature there at one time. That would be converted to a modern stormwater management basin. They'll have to control storms from the two-year event all the way up to the 100-year event. They'll also have to make sure that there's infiltration on the property to address current regulatory requirements. And just to step aside on the stormwater side, there'll also be a whole other submission of this project to the Department of Environmental Protection, which requires an NPDES permit to be prepared for the site and approved of the site. That's a separate governmental approval of such a project like this. Anything over an acre requires of disturbance requires an NPDES permit. So in addition to complying with our township regulations, they will also have to comply with DEP regulations. Our regulations relative to stormwater do mirror the state's requirements because we're all using the same stormwater management manual for the most part. So they've concluded in the information that we've been given that their stormwater will work and is feasible. They have not done any infiltration testing yet. That is something that will have to come with the final submission of the plan. As it relates to the sanitary sores, there's adequate sanitary sores that are available to the property. We've discussed with public works the proper connection that they would need to make if this plan moved forward to the sanitary sores. That's again something else that is a separate third-party approval. There'll have to be approval of the planning module for land development, which is basically says that there's proper treatment and capacity to carry the sewage to the sewage treatment plant. Under the transportation impact study that was prepared, I see that the applicant's consultant is in the audience. They didn't do a presentation on traffic impacts, but if there's questions, as I mentioned, that we basically concur with their traffic impact study, which was prepared in accordance with PENDOT guidelines and standards of the industry, that this development will not require any additional traffic improvements to the roads around the public.
Ladies and gentlemen.
As I move on to the geotechnical report that was submitted, there were some concerns that were addressed. We still have some concerns related to some of the lots and some of the roads as their proximity to the mine elevation. And those types of details were being worked out in the final analysis of the plans. The wetland analysis that was submitted was reviewed. There is one jurisdictional wetland on the property. It doesn't appear to impact the development and it will be protected. Under general comments related to the plan, there is a gas line that has to be relocated, or actually two gas lines. We need documentation of that, that the gas company isn't willing to do that. We understand that they have the lawyers coming to us. We also suggested that the plans be forwarded to the county parks department for reviewing comments. We've not seen any of that back yet. The way that mail's delivered to developments now, they will have one central location for the delivery of mail. We asked for some additional information on that. And then we just give our standard that they have to address the other groups' comments. So relatively speaking, you know, we're satisfied that the preliminary requirements have been met with the exception of the things that have outlined.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bernhardt, as planning consultant, do you have any questions or comments you would like to add?
Based on our view of the preliminary plan and the township's zoning ordinance... Based on our view of preliminary plan and the township's zoning ordinance, the plan complies with all of the criteria of the R1 and R2 zoning districts and is recommended for approval.
Thank you. You don't want to hear it. Mr. Bonetti, as township enforcement officer, do you have any questions or comments?
I just wanted to place in the record, we received the application on March 6th. And March 7th it was sent to ACEB with the county. As of today, we still have not received any comments from them. The 15th it was sent to the county parks department. And we also have not received any response from them as well. And March 20th, I posted the property along Sleepy Hollow. I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any preliminary questions or comments before we call on the public?
Mr. Chair, I have a question for the transportation analysis. I'm not sure who can address that. Thank you. So can I strive for, for the board, the transportation study that you performed? Come up and up to the mic, please.
Thank you. State your name and address just for the record.
Yes, Josh Haydo, David Western Associates Traffic Consultant. So the, the traffic study is to quantitatively identify traffic operation impacts of the development. So the study was scoped with the township's engineering consultant to identify what intersections to study. He projected the additional traffic into those intersections to identify if there would be significant increases in delay, stacking, et cetera. Mr. Deeser indicated the results of the study were favorable along those lines.
Can you tell us how many additional trips you're forecasting? I'm sure there's some questions in the audience.
Sure.
Just to say favorable.
Sure. So in the TIS, we focus on the most congested areas of the day. So that would be your AM commuter peak, your afternoon or evening commuter peak. And those are the areas that we focus on. So during the AM peak, this development is anticipated to generate about 75 vehicular trips. So that's a combination of...
Come on, we need to hear him, please.
Your report says 77.
Seventy, I, seventy-seven, sorry. Seventy-seven vehicular trips. So that's a combination of leaving and coming. Obviously in the morning, most people with residential elements are leaving. And vice versa in the afternoon. In the afternoon, I believe it's a little over 100, 107.
103.
And that's, that's the busiest peak hour, the two busiest peak hours of the day.
The times are those?
Those times are between 7:00 and 9:00 AM per one single hour and 4:00 to 6:00 PM.
We go. I don't know if this is for you. You stated earlier that, and on this report here it states, that the existing Sleepy Hollow roadway would be upgraded to provide the minimum of a 20-foot, and I don't know why it's listed as a cartway for traffic. And then you said about a minute later that the new road would be, up to PENDOT standards, would be 22-foot. Why isn't the existing one, why wouldn't that be upgraded to 22 along with...
The, currently there are no curbs associated with Sleepy Hollow. So the area that we talked about upgrading to a 20-foot cartway is your standard township requirement for a cartway without curbs. So we're building it to the width, but it's not having curbs at this location. Where we are along our property frontage and shown here on the plan, it would be a 20-foot cartway width or required in addition with the curves.
And with a sidewalk.
And with a sidewalk located along the northern side.
Anyone else on the board before we call on the public? Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, I know there's obviously a lot of folks here. We have a lot of opinions, comments, that, and we are simply not going to be able to get to everyone because of the time. We're gonna go through and pick some folks. And if someone has already presented what you want to discuss, for example, stormwater management, feel free to say my topic has already been discussed and that will just allow someone else some time to speak. So I'd like to call Thomas Preno, if he is in the audience.
Thank you. My name is Thomas Preno. I own and live at the property at 1020 Old Post Road. These rooms this evening are packed with many people, most of whom are here to demonstrate their objection to this proposed development. There are many different reasons for this opposition, from potential mines subsidence to the narrow bridge at the end of Sleepy Hollow Road at Stoltz Road, to overcrowding the schools, to excessive traffic on Stoltz Road. These are just a few of the reasons. There are many more. The reason I would like to focus my comments on this evening is the developer making this request. A quick Google search of this developer's name reveals a lot of search results, many of which are court cases involving this developer. Is South Park Township aware of recent court, of a recent court case in November where this developer, under two of his many company names, was found 85% negligent, along with a separate contractor that was found at 15% negligent. And the couple whose property was damaged was awarded $1.25 million in compensatory damages. According to the article I read summarizing the outcome of the case, the developer was found to have violated regulations for controlling erosion. At that same trial, the jury determined that the development company's conduct warranted an additional $5 million in punitive damages. $5 million in punishment. I didn't know what punitive meant, so I had to look it up. And it took the jury eight minutes to come to that conclusion. This developer was so outrageously negligent that the jury found it appropriate to punish the developer $5 million. Another search result showed that the developer attempted to sue the borough of Cannonsburg for $5 million in 2019 because Cannonsburg bought a dead-end borough road that this developer was using to access a property he was developing in a neighboring township under yet another development company name. The judge dismissed this case and mentioned in his opinion that the developer didn't submit plans to the borough or seek their approval for the use or access of the road in question. Judge also said in that developer's, excuse me. The judge also said that the developer's disregard for the rule of law in Cannonsburg is trouble. To say this proposed development hits close to home is an understatement. My property at 1020 Old Post Road is one of the six properties that share the southwestern border, which on this map is the very bottom border. We share the southwestern border of the Sleepy Hollow property in question this evening. So this literally hits close to my home. These six properties all have a hillside at the rear of our lots. The hillside ends at the property line shared with Sleepy Hollow property. The thought of a developer working the land directly below our homes is concerning. Will the disruption to the ground on that property have an effect on the hillside, on our properties? Considering the history of this developer has of negligence and disregard for rules and regulations, takes this from concerning to flat-out fearful. The more I learn about this developer, the more frightened I become at the thought of him developing the land directly behind my home. When I go to leave this evening, I will undoubtedly buckle my seatbelt. Not because I expect to be involved in a collision, because there's always a possibility of it. Therefore, I will take the necessary precautions to protect myself should that occur. When I get home, I will secure my home, not because I am expecting an intruder, but because I noted that intruders exist and I am taking precautions to protect myself and my family from that which has potential to occur. In a similar manner, it seems reasonable to evaluate this developer, his documented history of neglect and disregard, and to make a decision to not allow this developer to develop this property. While his developing of this property doesn't guarantee that catastrophe will occur, it by no means guarantees that he will not be negligent and that catastrophe will not occur. This is my home. I have worked hard for this. And I certainly don't want to take a chance that a negligent developer will cause my property to be damaged. And I know my neighbors feel the same way about their properties as well. Our kids play in our backyards. God forbid any one of those children are playing in the backyard if the hillside gives way because of digging and grinding, whatever else they need to do to prepare this property behind our homes. I humbly ask the planning committee to please take the precaution of avoiding any opportunity for catastrophe and not recommend this developer's request to be granted. Thank you for your time and attention.
Well done.
Beautiful.
Tim Foster, 1-0. Just one moment. Thank you very much for the comments. I know that the township has had some experience with this developer in the past. And Tom, you can speak to this more so than I can. But our experience with the developer has not, has been positive. Ladies and gentlemen, you have had, you're just stating that our experience with this developer has been positive in the past.
On this level?
So, Mr. Bonetti, you can provide a little...
So this developer is currently involved with the local South Park off of Snowdon Road. And as of today, we have had no issues, no problems, no mishaps, and no complaints.
We don't want to read that one.
Is it the size of this?
It has some decorum here, so everyone has a chance to hear your points.
So total, it's approximately 100 homes between the two? Correct. And like, as I stated earlier, no, no issues have been responded to them.
Hang on for just a moment, please. Mr. Deeser, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I, you know, my job is to protect other people in the township. We have rules and regulations to make sure that people's, other people's property is safeguarded. That's number one and most important to me. So all these studies that were submitted and submitted, and I've been around developing my whole career, which is almost 40 years. There's right ways to do things and there's wrong ways to do things. So the township... So the township puts the responsibility on me to control whoever develops the property, whether it be this developer or anybody else in the township. So my, my job number one is to make sure that the plans are something that are airtight and he has to build by the plans. Number two, he has to go out and have independent inspections of, like land, like to set the slopes to build the property. There has to be independent inspections of that. That's all submitted and reviewed by our office. In addition, somebody from my office is present at the site to deal with all the issues and inspect other things that go on related to the township infrastructure. So we just don't let people go out there willy-nilly and build stuff and disrupt everybody's life.
So when my hillside falls, South Park's liable?
Now, hold on, please.
Disrupting the process. I understand this is an emotional issue for everybody and I'm not, I'm not.
It's not emotional. I want to know who's going to be responsible for my hillside when it falls.
And when it doesn't fall.
Let's hope it does.
Let's hope it does.
But if it does, who is telling who's responsible?
Let's keep some, let's keep some decorum about, you'll have your chance to speak. Let's just give everybody a chance to hear what Mr. Deeser, who's our professional, to speak to you. He's trying to inform you. You don't have to agree with him, but listen to him.
We ought to take a look at him. Of the landscape in southwestern Pennsylvania with landslides and things that have occurred over the past several years, everybody is very diligent related to those and that's why we require extensive reviews and so forth. But the bottom line is there will be on top of these plans, there will be a development agreement. The developer has to post bonds, insurance, everything else to guarantee the completion of what has to occur. So there, there will be other safeguards there. But in Pennsylvania, we, we follow the guidelines of the state. We just can't say you can't develop your property. We can, we can tell them how and we can, we can watch everything that we did do, but if they, if they submit and they, they do it in compliance with, with, with the rules and the regulations are, they can do it. So I, I, I know everybody's scared. We've had two major developments in the township in the past five years that I've been involved or six years that I've been involved. Summit Station and the Villas at South Park, there's been no issues on those. Houses are already built. I wouldn't say there's no issues, there's always issues, but there's no, there's been no major issues related to any of those projects and they're now, you know, they're nearly completely built out. So I, I just wanted to state, you know, the process for those people that don't, that don't understand the whole process and how much we regulate and watch this activity.
Thank you. Mr. Foster, you are next. I know Mr. Preno had a comment.
With all due respect, I'm sure that you folks are professionals. I'm sure that you folks are going to do your job, but people in Wexford went through the same thing and a catastrophe occurred. So outrageously negligent that that developer was punished five million dollars. That's, I can't fathom that kind of money. Yes, this is emotional. This is very emotional. This isn't your hillside we're talking about. This is my hillside. This is Nancy's hillside. Roger's hillside.
Right. You got it, baby. You got it.
Is it guaranteed? No, it's not a guarantee, but it's also not a guarantee that it's not going to happen. And you can't guarantee me that it's not going to happen. This person has demonstrated negligence in the past. He has demonstrated defiance to the rule of law. I'm speechless. Thank you.
Excellent.
Mr. Foster, can you state to him and just address?
Tim Foster, ten forty-six West Chester. And I just, I just, I want to make sure I'm clear. So this board is prepared to make a preliminary recommendation to the governing body, to the Board of Supervisors on, on this, on this plan tonight?
We make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. We are not a governing body. We are, whatever we decide is a recommendation. The Board of Supervisors has final approval, et cetera. So they take our recommendation seriously, but they will take into account our recommendation, comments that they receive at the meeting from residents of the township, comments they hear just in passing before they make that final decision.
But is there a reason that you're moving forward without receiving the advisory letter from the Allegheny County Economic Development?
We said anything's moving forward, not this year.
I'm sorry?
We said anything's moving forward. We haven't, we haven't brought any.
Okay, I'm just, I'm asking a question. Have, have you received that letter?
As I stated earlier, no. We have not received any comments from the county.
But that is also not.
I, I just want to share some information with you. Just give me, give me a second.
Sure.
I, I've heard a number of times that that letter is rubber stamped and is not going to be issued. I stopped at a number of times with Tom to ask if I could receive a copy of that. I, I finally, I reached out to Matt Trefold, who's the director of the group. I've had a number of different long discussions with him.
What group?
The Allegheny County Economic Development.
Thank you.
And so my, you know, my, my first question to Matt was, is his process just a mere matter of rubber stamping projects? Because if so, we don't need to waste each other's time. So we have spent a lot of time talking about this project, talking about the concerns. And a very interesting question, he received that letter on March eleventh, so that gives him till April the tenth to reply. And so I talked to him on Monday, asked him for any update. He, you know, he made a very interesting point. He said that he had his whole team working on this proposal and he wasn't sure what the exact opposite word for rubber stamp was, but that's exactly what his group is doing now. He thought that this group was going to need all thirty days to April tenth to complete their review. He was very surprised and disappointed to hear that this meeting was even happening before the, before the review was even completed and sent to the township. Now, and we, we understand this is not a governing board, but you're making a recommendation to the governing board. Now, we talked about, I just want to share some of the things we talked about because it's important. We discussed the language in the plan filed, filed with the township. Due to the poor quality of Sleepy Hollow Road, the Jessic Woods were paved and lined to twenty feet of Sleepy Hollow Road from the bridge to the eastern end. Now, you, you talk about your classic understatements a long time. Let's, let's break this down. And this, this is my conversations with Matt. When we say twenty feet, for the, the only road in and out for hundreds of people, somebody with the county called a twenty-foot road in an alley. I mean, for example, West Chester and Old Post are twenty-five and a half feet wide. Stoltz, a very narrow road, if anyone's ever driven on it, in most places measures twenty-four feet. So how can one justify twenty feet for development of this size with the only way in and out? Now, Matt believed that the correct answer was twenty-seven to twenty feet, more realistic, plus the sidewalk, plus the requirement for the pre-existing non-conforming use for the horses, so a horse trail there, which he said is very well established in Pennsylvania law, plus the pinup required shoulder. So in the end, a fourteen-foot Sleepy Hollow Road will be about three to four hundred percent wider, you know, according to what I'm hearing from Matt in his recommendations. Now, now this empties out. The only way out is over an eighteen-foot wide bridge, the Stoltz Road. Who pays for a wider bridge? The township? The taxpayers? This is a huge potential liability and I hope everyone on the board realizes that. I mean, this bridge is going to need to be replaced. The new bridge would be considerably wider to accommodate the road width, the shoulder, the sidewalk and the horse trail. I asked Matt, I said, how do you replace a bridge when there's people living on Sleepy Hollow right now and that's their only way in and out? And his, his response is, well, it can be done quickly, but that just exponentially increases the cost. I asked Matt to drive down Sleepy Hollow Road where the hundred-year-old room and pillar mine underneath is already showing signs of subsidence with large sinkhole pits collapsing sides. Now, I'm an attorney, I worked for Kinsol Energy for twelve years, so I do know a little bit about subsidence and I just, I want to share that. Now, the interesting part, the mining report from last, the, the last development, Red Rock, ACA Engineering said that the risk of mine subsidence for a portion of the site carrying Sleepy Hollow Road is high, the highest risk of subsidence on the low, medium to high scale. So this end, there's also potential acid mine drainage that would damage the property and damage everything downstream. And interestingly enough, what causes a hundred-year-old room and pillar mine to collapse? Two major factors. One, the influx of groundwater such as cutting down all of the vegetation, all of the trees that absorb the water now from this mountain-like hillside. Two, substantial, I'm sorry. Substantial surface activity, which clearly both of those you're going to be recommending tonight, because the first step of this process is clearing all vegetation and the second one is to be doing all this work on the road, which causes that issue. And I, I want to remind you of a very important point that I made last year, it's concept of sovereign immunity. And what, what should be hugely important area of concern for the township, the critically important veil of immunity from litigation for a municipality or township that they typically enjoy does not apply to roads and sidewalks. So this township has a duty to keep them free of any known or foreseeable dangers. And I hope you're going to hear a lot tonight from me and from others, all the foreseeable dangers with the subsidence and everything else with that road. I mean, if anyone has driven down that road lately, I try to drive down it often, it is horrific. The sides are falling. All the trucks that are down there, the road is breaking down. So to say we're going to pave this road and widen it to twenty feet is just, you know, hard to understand. Now, one of the other issues that I addressed with Matt is, is his concern about the stream that runs through the property. For some reason, it's listed on their, what they filed as a, not a regulated stream. Now, Jim Pongress, who was here, who I talked to, he's lived there since the nineteen forties and he can attest this is a perpetual stream, there's fish everywhere you look, which empties out into a very active piney fork stream and then Peters Creek that is stocked with trout. So another example of the many issues in landmines with this project. And please understand, I'm, I'm not just working against this development. I hosted three meetings with Gary and John Parman, the landowners, the director level individuals for the Allegheny County Land Trust, executives from Allegheny County and some very well-connected business and political people from, from, from around the area to ensure that an offer was ready from the trust as soon as possible after this property is no longer under contract. Even though, even though he understood that it was under contract and respected that, I just want to make sure you know that in the end, Gary's dying wish was this property goes back to the park through the trust. And this was held me by his lifetime at the funeral. I've also had numerous conversations with Andrew Kuzma, our state rep. He has given his full support to try to get this property back to the people, the bikers, the hikers, the dog walkers, horses and the buffalo. We, we just, we simply ask you, do everything in your power to protect this one-of-a-kind area of the township and the peaceful and tranquil Sesquik area of the county park. That's an area that's completely misunderstood here because that Sesquik area is forever going to change. This, this development is within about five hundred feet of the Buffalo. My wife and I are the founders of the Friends of the South Park Buffalo. We have a tremendous amount of passionate followers and everyone is concerned about this, I can tell you. In fact. And, and I think just to understand that the community's passion on this, the last time we did this for Red Rock, we had about three thousand signatures on a chain store petition. This time we had about eleven thousand seven hundred people sign this petition, propose a development. You were appointed to this board to do what's best for the township and hopefully to some degree, the world.
I think it's important, I want to get a clarification. What we're talking about tonight is a preliminary approval. It's not a final. I'm not asking you, I'm asking our professionals. Please let me get the answer. This is a preliminary approval, not a final approval. So if there's documentation that needs to come in from the county, it could certainly come in before our next meeting, which, Tim, wait a minute. Let me finish. Let me finish. You, you made several comments.
I'm pettish.
Just let me get this clear in my head. So that the next, our next meeting, if this is approved, would move to a final consideration for approval and we should have any documentation in from the county that you presented to by that point, I would expect.
If they submit something, yes.
If they submit something.
Most times.
It's just a point of clarification.
Most times we, the township doesn't consider any. How much time?
Robert, I'm so happy that you said that, because that's what got this process under a microscope. It's what we needed to happen. And, and I'll just say, and I'm surprised, nobody here has reached out to Matt. We, we, we talk quite often. He has said to me that nothing should happen until they receive that letter. Thirty days they turn it around and that's when the process should start. There should be no preliminary approval and certainly no final approval. And remember, that plan cannot be registered without his signature on it. So that's, that's all I'm saying. He's not happy.
Let me ask, let me ask a question. So, Tim, it's your, it's your understanding that he's more than prepared to give a response? Because that's, I mean, we make our decision based on all the information that's in front of us and not information that's never shows up. Is your opinion that he was pretty?
What, what he said on Monday unequivocally, he says, Tim, I have my whole staff on this and I'm going to take probably all the way up to April tenth. He said, whatever the opposite of rubber stamp is, that's what we're doing. Fine-tooth comb going through everything.
I'm just saying that because in the past, we haven't received information from the county and maybe it was something that was a small development, maybe it didn't feel necessary. That's all I'm saying.
It doesn't have the complexities that this project has, correct? And that's what Matt did.
But they give a timeframe. They have thirty days.
They have till April tenth.
Our meeting isn't until next Monday this time, so there's plenty of time for them to get that information to us if it's forthcoming. I, I hope you're right, Tim.
It will be forthcoming.
Well, I hope it's right, because if he has his whole team working on it and he needs more time than April the tenth.
He doesn't. No, he knows, he knows the law. He knows he has till April the tenth.
But in the past, they haven't, fine. But that hasn't been the process in the past for the county to send information to us. They've not done it, so that doesn't.
They, the complexities that exist with this, that exist with this project, that's what Matt is telling me. So, and you, you, you will see a report that's completely different than what you've been received before.
That'll be very interesting if it contradicts what our professionals are telling us.
In addition, that final approval may not be next month either. That could be a couple of months out depending on what the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah, and it would only be coming to us as a, for consideration of final approval if the preliminary approval is approved.
At the approach.
Preliminary approval is not ripping trees down and sticking a shovel in the ground. So everyone understands that. Continue with submitting paperwork and requesting final approval. So, so preliminary approval does nothing as far as construction.
And why do it?
Because we're requiring the process.
You're saying it does nothing?
No.
So reject it.
It does nothing, reject it.
Well, there you go.
That's possible. It has very possible, it may happen tonight. And that's why the importance of the supervisor came, because even if it is rejected tonight, the supervisor can still prove it.
It's offensive to say it does nothing, because it gives a lot.
I meant it just meant nothing as far as shovels in the ground.
It, it means a lot.
It means something to the next step of the process.
Jason Sobek?
Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
No, you're fine. My name's Jason Sobek. Is there a sign-in sheet to spake? Cause I walked in, I'm stuck in the back here. Is there a sign-in sheet to spake?
Yes.
Yes.
Where is that located?
Sitting here.
Do you want me to run it back?
You can. There, we are going to probably not get to everybody.
Oh, you should.
Why not? Look here. Mr. Sobek?
Yes, Jason Sobek, seventeen fifty Stoltz. I look very close to where this proposed development may be. And before I get started with my comments, I'd like to present you with a petition that we started less than three weeks ago that has garnered over eleven thousand signatures. One thousand four hundred and fifteen of those signatures are from zip codes one five one two nine and one five two three six and the vast majority are from nearby areas. So addition with over eleven thousand signatures. So, petition with over 11,000 signatures. I can only print one copy due to, due to the number. So let me start by saying, this is not your typical undeveloped piece of land that we're discussing today. This property is a hidden gem that contains a mature stand of trees, wetlands, trails, an abundance of wildlife, borders the county park, and Sleepy Hollow Run passes through this property and also passes through my property. This area in Sleepy Hollow is frequently used and cherished by equestrians, hikers, and bikers. Much of this property is on a steep slope, creating major concerns related to stormwater runoff and flooding if the property is stripped of trees and vegetation. Historically, this property was heavily mined with a substantial potential for subsidence and acid mine drainage, should there be reservoirs of water contained in the mine voids. And somebody said about that we haven't started ripping down trees, just want to tell you up on the county park side, they've already started ripping down some trees. We witnessed it.
Is that true?
I don't know whether the developer...
So I've heard, but I haven't physically witnessed it.
Yeah, I agree.
I can hear. For our geotechnics works, there's access to go in to do all of our departmental locations. That's a requirement of geotechnics.
And it appears, I can't say this for certain, because I don't witness, but it appeared they're running through the county park. As far as waivers, modifications, and variances, I know that Mr. Wetzel said that there aren't any, but with the street and the bridge and the condition that it's in, I'm not sure how this project can go through without any waivers or modifications. As far as the road and the bridge, as I mentioned, it's frequently used by equestrians. We were just down there today, doing an interview with WPXI, and there were two people on horses that passed through while we were there for about 15 minutes. During the summertime, bikers, dog walkers, Sleepy Hollow Road is frequently used, and that bridge and that road are, as Tim mentioned, essentially in Allen. As far as bringing it up to township standards, I don't think that a 20-foot cartway would be adequate, and I would hope that there are going to be sidewalks going all the way down Sleepy Hollow through the property, two stolts, and there needs to be some sort of way for horses to pass through there if you're going to build 108 houses up there. So, a lot of issues with the road, a lot of issues with the bridge, and then with the road being widened, the four-foot sidewalks, have you gotten permission from the adjoining property owners, the adjoining landowners? Because you're going to be cutting into their property, clearly. Not sure how that process works, if you're going to take it by eminent domain, but it can't be done without sidewalks. Stormwater and flooding concerns, we certainly have those, and as we saw in this developer's lecture development, there's a little bit of history there. And although there are going to be detention ponds, Bonnie Gildea, who will be speaking tonight, lives at 1971 Sleepy Hollow Road, I don't see anything protecting Bonnie's house from stormwater. All that, it's a hill above Bonnie, and all that's going to be clear cut, all that's going to come into Bonnie's property and her stables, her horses, which she'll talk more about, but when I'm looking at Bonnie's house on there, I have serious concerns. Increased traffic on Stoltz, Stewart, King School, and Ayrman. I live on Stoltz, traffic has been steadily increasing over the last two years. I find it very difficult to believe that 108 homes are going to result in only 77 additional traffic. As far as sanitation and sewage capacity, again, we don't have the reports on that, but after this meeting, I'm going to be requesting everything the township has to look over that myself. As far as the wildlife, these 60-acre, the 60-acre wooded lot is home to an abundance of wildlife. I frequently encounter turkeys, foxes, geese, ducks, coyotes, and of course, deer. Where will that treasured wildlife go? Currently, I have a large number of coyotes that will be forced into our yards, the yards of those that live near the area. I already see coyotes in my yard on a regular basis. Take away that 60 acres, as Bonnie can attest to, she lives right there, there are a lot of coyotes in that land. Wetlands. I would like to know if a wetlands expert has been consulted, and I would like to see any wetlands delineation, because I believe that that property is wetlands. I know Tim mentioned the Allegheny County Economic Development Report. Last year, when we had this with Red Rocks, that report contains some insightful information. I don't think that this board should move forward with recommending absence of that report, but again, the agency needs to be timed. School requirements, Pat, I'm sure that you've probably looked into this, but what will be, our, our school taxes are one of the highest millages in the county, so what will the increased cost to us taxpayers be as far as the additional students in the classrooms, as well as the student teacher issue?
We've been advised, as far as capacity, we have capacity to handle additional students coming through the system. We're just going on a 20 room addition at the elementary school, we have plenty of room at the middle school, and any vacillation, we've discussed those things, so just sow your wigs.
Also, Old Pittsburgh Seamine Works outcrop and subcrop on this property. There's a high risk of mine subsidence at this site, which creates a major safety risk for the township, its residents, and the risk of polluting Sleepy Hollow Run, downstream watersheds, and wetlands due to acid mine drainage resulting from development and the potential of cutting into previous mine voids containing contaminated water during the excavation and installation of gas, water, and sewage lines. There's a high risk of subsidence disturbing gas lines, which could cause a home explosion, as we see in the area, or worse, as well as gas seeping from the old mine works through the surface structures into the home due to those holes. This site requires drilling and a geotechnical study, there may be no way to see it, to ensure adequate surface support. Surface support is necessary for the safety of homes, gas lines, and other aspects of residential development. Test borings should be completed before preliminary approval is considered, further evaluate any potential safety hazards for the residents, the environment, and the abiding county park. I would like to know if test borings were completed, and if so, how many? I'd like to see that report. Hydrological studies are needed to determine the potential of cutting into old mine works and acidic contaminated water that could discharge into Sleepy Hollow Run and downstream watersheds. These studies should be completed prior to preliminary approval, in my opinion, so you can make an informed decision for the safety of our residents and the environment. Also, as mentioned before, the historical adherence to the Clean Streams Law by this developer is a major concern, I've read the court documents. Based on these issues and the many concerns which will be discussed tonight, I urge the planning commission to vote not to recommend preliminary approval at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Sable will be back in just a moment. Tim Smith, will he come forward?
Hi, I'm Timothy Smith, I live in 1971 Edward Drive. So, yeah, I do believe they were doing geotechnical stuff when they pulled trees down. Just, because I worked from home and I saw. Talked about stormwater. I won't go into it, other than to say, I have a civil engineering degree, I have 30 years of experience in development, stormwater control, stormwater management. If your professionals don't have that experience, I'm more than willing to give you my opinion. Second thing, there were mentioned the species and stuff. I work for an international energy company, and we always do threatened and endangered species evaluations. I, I don't know if that's been done or not, it could have been, but I can sit in my backyard and watch what I'm required to mitigate for endangered bats flying over my head. So just saying that, I know there's stuff there, but I haven't seen any of the studies. And I'm not saying you didn't do it, just saying, I haven't seen it. I don't know if you have. And then, I just want to mention that, since I do work in a lot of development work, I work in a lot of townships that have tree removal mitigations, and someone mentioned a $5 million lawsuit. I'm currently working on a project where I have to pay $10 million to remove trees. So, $5 million is like this to me. So, I don't have that much money yet, but the companies do. Thanks.
Thanks.
Hi. I live at 1971 Sleepy Hollow Road, right here on this little map. I can't believe that here we are, one year later, fighting to save Sleepy Hollow again. What kind of a developer wants to destroy what we have fought so hard to preserve? He has to know how truly unique and special this area is to all of us after last year's turnip to stop the Red Rock development. Take a walk down Sleepy Hollow's half-dirt road in Wofford Run. This area is unlike no other, and once it's gone, it's gone forever. I am here today to express my strong opposition to the proposed major subdivision with Dustic Woods in my neighborhood. I have legitimate concerns. Frank Zikitis is an unscrupulous developer. Significant traffic congestion, Sleepy Hollow Bridge is the only entrance and exit for clearing, logging, construction, and residential traffic. Environmental issues, stormwater runoff, erosion and flooding, higher taxes, can our school yet handle the mountain development? You've got three if you're adding this one to the mix in the last five years. What about our comprehensive plan, lots of green space? And of course, the historic bison herd? Sleepy Hollow is my home. My family lives at 1971 Sleepy Hollow Road on a small farm with our horses. My small, small farm is one of a kind, has been in existence for over 70 years. To find another place like this will be impossible. So of course, we are furious to have houses built in our backyard. Heavy machinery, traffic, workers in and out all day, the noise alone will cause undue stress on my horses, not to mention the vet bills. What about stormwater and surface runoff? How will this be retained and channeled to minimize the impact during heavy rain, snow, etc.? Surface runoff has the potential to contain hazardous chemicals when flowing across the construction site. Hydraulic fluid, oil from construction vehicles, water used as painters wash water, water used for cleaning of cement mixers and machinery, just a name of you. How is this going to be disposed of? This water is considered hazardous due to the toxin and chemicals. Is this going to run through my pastures and put my horses in danger? My farm has never taken water on in the past 70 years. Now you want to build houses directly behind me. The land is higher than my property. It is a known fact that land developments have increased the number of landslides. Mass movements of soil, rocks falling, sliding, and flowing is going to be unavoidable once you remove the dense forest behind me. Our homes are not only our biggest financial investments, but our sanctuaries. My family and my horses will be subject to undue duress for years while this development is going on. And what after, when adult development's complete? Are my new neighbors going to harass me and my horses? Is there going to be a privacy fence separating this development from my pastures? According to the developer, the HOA will be responsible for maintaining the stormwater basins. Is this going to include my property? Am I supposed to leave the future of my farm up to an HOA that appears nothing about protecting my property? Not only does this development bring too many uncertainties for my family, my horses, and my home, but it is known fact that this developer, Frank Zikitis, is guilty of the following. Creates shell companies with no assets and uses them for his land developments. He does not purchase insurance to protect any individual or properties harmed by his activity. He attempts to sucker naive contractors into his jaws and push liability to them by making them co-permittees. He accepts responsibility for nothing, forces lawsuits, and then tries to scare and bully injured parties to back down. He gets sued a lot. He cuts all corners and ignores contract obligations. When he is declared liable, he simply files for bankruptcy for the shell companies and escapes financial liability. He officially resides in Florida, he is not a local developer. This information is all available on the public domain and very relevant to our situation. Frank Zikitis has a horrible reputation, and I honestly can't imagine how this planning commission can give him permission to develop in our community. I urge you, our elected officials, to investigate him and deny approval from the Dustic Woods. As for me, if this development is approved, I will seek legal counsel and do whatever I can to stop the Dustic Woods.
James, and I'm not going to even try the last name, 1901 Sleepy Hollow Converse. Converse.
Sleepy Hollow Road and Stoltz Road. And the gentleman here was saying that there's no curves on Sleepy Hollow Road. Here's a picture of a tractor trailer sitting, running down the road, which is pretty much one of them. You can see there's a curve over here, and also how the tractor trailer blocks the road in that direction. 20 feet of made curves, it's still waiting to take over. And then the other thing that, show you this picture here, they put my gun right there. And I mean, our tons of people, they don't help with the joy of keeping the fix, but that's what he's got. I had set fire, he had a fire, he had a fire on my...
Hi, my name's Allison Foster. I live at 1912 Stoltz Road. Been there since 2001. Walk Sleepy Hollow every week, I'm in the woods all the time. My first concern is really with the traffic. So I know you say there won't be such an impact, but we have a lot of deer. So if you take the woods, we're going to have a lot of deer, so the cars will just be hitting the deer all the time. So that's a big concern for me. So I don't know how we could prevent that. I know everybody has talked about the water, I just wanted to bring up a fact of what's happening in Brownton right now with the water situation. So Brownton never used to flood, but we've had water rescues in Brownton due to a development that's not even part of South Park. You can see their detention or retention pond, but then as it flows, it goes down into their stream. When we were children, we used to play in that stream. They used to take us out from school to play in it. It never flooded, nor did we need rescues, but the water is not maintained, even though they tell you that they're gonna maintain it. They let it run into our creeks. South Park has to then try to maintain all of this from another township's development, even though all the rules were followed. So we really do need to watch the water and where it's going to go and how it's going to affect all of us. But my next question is, how many sewer caps do we allow when we have so much construction going on that we would continue to allow that many more? I'm just concerned for our sewage system and all of those taps happening at the same time. My other concern is with the development, no green space? I mean, they just don't offer any green space, just where you can't build, you decide, well, that's open space. But I mean, nowhere in there is there a tree saved at all. You just took every... But if you've ever walked over there or gone through all... But if you've ever walked over there or gone through all of those plants and seen all of the trails, you would have stopped and said, why would we dare encroach across the street with two more houses when we could have walked here doing as much damage as we possibly could with that? So it's kind of crazy, and I know as everybody has mentioned, with the road and the bridge, but I just don't see, if the, you look at the guardrails now, they're smashed to bits with hardly any traffic going down it. And now you want to bring in, what you say, seventy-seven cars, which would likely be two hundred cars. You would never turn in and out. And then I'm going to be trying to get in and out of my house every day. I don't know how that's going to work. Are you going to put a stop sign right in front of my house pretty soon? Because they want to get out, and I want to get out, and the school buses are coming from the new school in Baffal Park. So it's, it's a conundrum, certainly, but we don't need that. So I ask you to consider, please help keep our green space.
Diane Foster?
My name's Diane Foster. I'm at ten forty-six West Chester. I'm here tonight to give South Park Buffalo family the most needed voice. Last year at this time, my family began this process for the last development. We are, we are not against all development, but there are places like Sleepy Hollow with the buffalo, the horses, the pristine land that should not be touched and like this is. This past year has been an amazing journey of advocating for the buffalo. We started the Facebook page, Friends of the South Park Buffalos, and now the buffalo have over six thousand three hundred friends supporting them. We have worked with the county for better vet care, diet, new water equipment, trees, and there's much more to come. We're working with the top non-elected official of Allegheny County and Director of Parks, Andy Beckley, and county executive Sierra Emirato, who are a huge advocate and support our efforts. And when we introduced our ideas to support the buffalo, the county stepped up. Now all the time, we look at you, our county, our township officials, our buffalo are historically important. They're a national mammal and a national treasure. We are blessed that they call South Park home. We hope that you will give them the same treatment. The peace and tranquility of Sesquik Drive and Sleepy Hollow are irreplaceable. This development is huge, and I hope that we will not be remembered as the generation who took so much away from future generations. This development is only five hundred feet away from the buffalo in its closest proximity, and they are extremely sensitive to noise. The buffalo's hearing is so sensitive that they can hear up to three miles away. We have seen the buffalo get frightened by helicopters, drones, and even a woodpecker. There were two babies born last week, baby Elou and baby Dakota. And when crowds come for the fruit and vegetable enrichment feedings, we have to warn people to be quiet so they don't frighten the buffalo and put the babies in danger. Unlike in the wild where they can move on to quieter areas, in their enclosure, they have nowhere else to go to escape the noise of this development. The buffalo have called South Park preserve their home for almost one hundred years. Now their future lies in your hands. I hope and I pray the board will do the right thing and preserve the peace and tranquility of Sleepy Hollow and Sesquik Drive. Thank you.
I know one of the comments that were made just a few moments ago had to do with taxes in a school district. And I wanted to give you a chance, Mr. Sable, to talk about that. Just as a school board representative, you can maybe provide us with some information related to that.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Russ. You know, there's a lot of aspects we're taking into consideration tonight. You both are bringing forward many, many great points. But one of the other perspectives that I look at as we're considering this is the fact that if you realize that South Park is nine point two seven square miles of property, there are six hundred and forty acres in one square mile. The park, which is a tax-exempt parcel, pays no taxes to the township or the school district, but it comprises two thousand acres. When you add the other non-taxable property, whether it's from the nettle plant or property that's owned by the school district or the township or the churches or the other parks or the roads, that's another five hundred to seven hundred and fifty acres. That's two thousand five hundred to two thousand seven hundred and fifty acres. That comes down to about three point nine to four point three square miles of property. Now, why am I telling you this? I'm telling you this because I know of no other community or school district in our region that has forty-three to forty-six percent of its property tax-exempt. So what that means is that all of us in here who pay taxes are doing the heavy lifting. The residential taxpayers doing the heavy lifting because we have a small commercial industrial base. So as we're considering all of the situations, one of the things that occurs to me that I need to measure is what's the value of this property when it brings tax dollars in to help provide some relief to all of the taxpayers in the community? The more property, the more it's worth. All I'm asking you is to let me share this thought with you. So what's happening is, I know through my calculations, based upon a hundred and eight homes being in there, probably averaging around three hundred thousand dollars, with a common level ratio of fifty-four percent, would bring in annually, once the plan is complete, somewhere between a half a million dollars to the school district and over fifty-four thousand dollars to the township. Which means that's helping money coming in, helping the other taxpayers make these commitments because we need vital services for the school district. Educating kids today is not like educating kids even ten years ago with all of the complications that are currently in place. And that means we need more money to make that happen. We are updating our facilities, and we're doing things to make that all happen. But I've got to take into consideration what this type of a development brings forward to the entire community. And I understand your points, and you're making some very, very strong points. I'm taking into consideration the other side of what the asset part of having a development like this happen and how it impacts all of the taxpayers in the community. I, so what I'm trying to say to you is, when you have sixty-three miles of road or a hundred and forty-five acres that's owned by the school district, and another two hundred and thirty-eight acres owned by the nettle plant, and another fifteen acres owned by the township, that's a lot of tax-exempt property. I know of no other community in our region that has forty-three to forty-six percent of tax-exempt property. So it relies on the residential taxpayer to carry the load. And we need that money, and we have opportunities to consider plans like this.
Yeah.
When we're talking about helping the school district provide services to the children of the community and provide critical services that the township has to provide to the community. So there's that aspect that we need to consider as a part of this entire proposal. And somewhere along the line, we got to find how this works. But I needed to raise those points with you because those are other pieces to this that you may not be aware of, but we are aware of. And I just wanted to share that with you from my perspective, because from my perspective, what's at the top of my list are the children in this township and the taxpayers on the road. And that's where I am. The road. That's where I'm sitting because you can't discount this and not take this into consideration.
I'm sorry.
How much money did you get from Summit Station? Well, very high.
People don't want.
Looks like garbage.
You need to say that loud, Tim. Because that's what happens when we have to go back and pay for all the special needs that we have for the school district and the township. The only other option we have is to raise the taxes. If the community is.
Still, that worked out.
Yeah, something we need to be. I needed to inform you. I'm only trying to inform you. I'm not trying to alienate you. I'm just trying to.
Can I make a quick comment since I brought up school taxes?
Uh huh.
Sure. So Pat, with all due respect, we just had Summit Station and Bills of South Park, two, Summit Station, a massive development. So we just had two massive developments that should help offset school taxes. And if you want this, put it somewhere else than we did.
That money was used to help pay for the renovation of the middle school, to re-up the whole project regarding the stadium, the, eliminating the old high school and building a new facility there. We're putting a twenty classroom expansion onto the elementary school. You know, we can't do that without raising taxes, and that's where the money came from. Summit Station was like something that we weren't anticipating till it happened, but those provided us the resources between there, the Bills and South Park of bringing big money into the school district to help pay those debt off.
I had wanted to let Mr. Sable speak, because I know there's been comments about student taxes. And so, can our school district handle the influx of students that may come from this? And I wanted you to hear from him what the school district sees. So there is room to handle the influx of students that this would cause.
There is.
And from a tax perspective, for the, as Pat was saying, from the township perspective, from us as residents, it does help from that standpoint. That was the entire point of asking Pat to speak, was just to enlighten everybody that yes, we have room in our school district as it sits today and what is being built at the moment to accommodate growth that is going to occur organically throughout the entire township. So. So are there, are there any other South Park residents that would like to speak?
Oh, we're on the list.
We're on the list.
We're on the list, okay. Why don't you come on up?
What happened to the list?
Katie May? Hi, I'm Shady Marie Christian. I am pretty much a lifelong South Park resident. I live at three thousand eighty drive. I'm not in this neighborhood, but many of the folks here I grew up with, and I'm here to support them. I'm also the executive director and founder of an organization called Lettuce Turn Up the Beat Sustainability Collective. I've been studying sustainability for about thirty years and creating sustainability education programs for close to ten. We work in education outreach and advocacy. I'm also a public policy, community advocate. So everybody who's here has basically touched on ecology and they've talked about the animals. I'm going to tell you about trees. Obviously, they filter our air, they filter the water. We're downwind from Clark, Clark Cook Works is one of the worst polluters in southwestern Pennsylvania. I myself, I'm going to go into the public health perspective, I myself suffer from two diseases. I have, I was diagnosed with a neurodegenerative disease two years ago, three years ago, and fibromyalgia in my twenties. It is not genetic, it is from the heavy metal toxins in our soil. Southwestern Pennsylvania is number two in the world, number two in the world for neurodegenerative and autoimmune disorders, and it mostly affects women. I guarantee every single one of each other knows a woman in your life who is suffering from lupus, from fibromyalgia, from MS. I ran a soft survey two years ago of a hundred women from southwestern Pennsylvania, South Park and surrounding districts between the ages of thirty and sixty. Sixty percent are now suffering from a neurodegenerative or autoimmune disorder that is notched. I grew up less than half a mile from Wayford, Colorado. I take my kids to play in Peters Creek. We, just to let you know, the visual subsidence, you can see erosion already. I mean, I don't know how good your vision is, mine's pretty good. I also tested the water eight years ago at Peters Creek. It's not as healthy now as it was then. Excuse me. It also affects the mycelia and the microorganisms that are living underground. They go twelve miles underground, and they scatter up. It is a whole system that travels throughout the world. So it does affect the agricultural land that is adjacent to Allegheny County and within Allegheny County. So it affects your food supply as well. Excuse me. Obviously, I talked about the air quality, the soil quality, this agriculture, and I understand the need that South Park has for money, and I'm here to talk about economics, which is another pillar of sustainability. The main reason that, I lived in South Park for a long time, we moved back, the main reason was because of the natural habitat. That is one of the biggest reasons that people move to this area now. Definitely not from nightlife or restaurants.
Right.
But one way that we can increase, you know, our, the money that comes into the district is by allowing more commerce. You know, would it be terrible to have a grocery store? South Park is a food swamp. It's not a food desert, it is a food swamp because we have a Dollar General with no sidewalks and people getting hit on Brownstone Road driving up there with no lights as well. So, you know, that would be helpful. Another thing is, I would cut the fat internally. Let's look at where we're spending and how we're spending it. That's another thing that you can do. The third thing I would suggest is, take a look at Eddy. They are a sustainable community. They are one of the first sustainable communities in southwestern Pennsylvania, and they are thriving. You want to look for money? I can find you six hundred thousand dollars tomorrow. Guaranteed. I'm very good at finding money, and I'm very well-connected at the state, county, and federal levels. So I would have you, have me leave my card with you. Please feel free to reach out about any things that I discuss, and thank you so much for your time.
Okay, guys.
Julia Gunn, eighteen forty, eighteen sixty, Stoltz Road. And I am right here. So this is my ten acres. I am right at the intersection, okay? And the problem with their detention pond being down here is if this water runs straight downhill across the mare pad through my property into the creek. On my property here, I have a ventilation shaft, a mine shaft. The Department of Bureau of Mines comes maybe every six months to fill in some gravel because of all the water drainage coming down from that hill. So I can't imagine what's going to happen when the trees are gone. So that's my point in my personal property. And you talk about commerce. We're like the Saxonburg of the South Hills. We have eight horse farms on Stoltz Road.
Eight?
Probably over a hundred horses in the park, okay? What is the top ten most expensive hogging in the United States?
Kids.
Horse. And kids. But there's a lot of money that comes into South Park because of those horse state lines. This development goes in, what's going to happen when they build this development here? My horses and our riders are going to be going down Stoltz Road to go up into the park this way. We won't be able to go down Sleepy Hollow. So you're going to have traffic behind our big horses' bus the whole way down to the next intersection. And that's just a fact. That's what's going to happen. Also, with the new elementary school, I've talked to Mark Krasinski, you know Mark Krasinski? He's the operation principal for the new building up there.
It's the Baffal Park.
Baffal Park.
Oh, it's Baffal Park, no.
Yeah, have you seen the new school?
Nope.
Okay. Drive by.
I have trouble taking care of our own school.
Well, no, just drive by.
That's why you shouldn't be on this committee.
I understand your point.
Drive by where they're building it, you'll see how the roads is getting. Drive by where they're building it, you'll see how the roads is, is getting way, is becoming a problem. Um, but I've been talking to Mark about what can we do? Like, let's not complain about the traffic. What can we do about it? So, I looked into, um, there are actually some funds called TAPA funds, transportation alternative funds. And I think we would qualify on Stoltz Road. It would have the coordinated effort between South Park, South Park, and the state because Stoltz is a state road. But they, I talked to the girl, uh, who's a federal link in Pennsylvania. And she said, we really would qualify and what would be the alternate, uh, transportation area. So, it would be a pathway along for, uh, for bikes, for, uh, for walkers. Right now, you can't even walk along Stoltz Road. There's, there's no, there's no sign language. There's no sign language. When you get across the bridge, which we have across from our horses, I mean, there's no room. Absolutely no room for anything else but, you know, another car beside it. And they're just whizzing by. I have to say that the neighbors, since we had this, um, you know, this kind of discussion about Sleepy Hollow, have been very cognizant of the question of the mountain riders. But that's a conversation I've been having with Mark Krasinski, is how do we educate all the people from coming from Bethel Park, from Stoltz Road this way, from Berryman this way? They're all coming, 1,800 students to King School off of Stoltz. So, I don't think we can move forward with another plan like this until we see how the traffic situation comes into play with that, the elementary school. I mean, was that part of your traffic study? Did you consider that elementary school?
You should just go on.
No, we should have done.
So, I think that's something I'm willing you to think about because it's going to tap that whole core. From ADA, the King Stoltz, Stoltz to Berryman, it's just going to be one big loop of buses. Eight, seven, six, 60 to 70 buses per day, per shift. Okay, coming around that way. Okay, then there're going to be like 108 cars trying to get out of there, around the buses. And here, God, now my horse, I'm going down Sleepy Hollow. And they're going to be beeping, beeping, giving me a light signal. But, uh, but that is the future. So, I just want to make those comments.
Thank you.
Could you elaborate a little bit more detail about, you said, what agency comes every six months?
Bureau Mines.
Bureau Mines, thank you. And then, uh...
It's a ventilation shaft.
It's a ventilation shaft, thank you. And then also, another question was, uh, you know, I'm driving down Stoltz. I'll be quite honest with you, I see the horse farms. What, your number was 10? What was that?
I have 10 acres.
Okay, do you know how many horse farms there were? You said there were 100.
Eight.
And eight horse farms in that vicinity?
Eight horse farms.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just wanted to ask if you could, you know, I know it's late and we're tired. I've been standing back here since we started.
Um, can you state your name, please, for the record?
Yeah, I will. This is going to be comedy, this is going to be up here. Um, my name is Jill Ding. Um, address 2520, Halt Route. I'm going to read from my phone. So, today I stand before you to advocate for the preservation of Sleepy Hollow in South Park. Sleepy Hollow is not merely a piece of land, it's a sanctuary, a piece of our history, and a haven for nature. As whispers of its potential purchase and transformation into townhomes echo through our community, it is imperative that we recognize the value of protecting this cherished gem. Sleepy Hollow serves as a vital sanctuary for wildlife and natural beauty. Its diverse ecosystem provides refuge for countless species of plants and animals. I'm thirsty. I'm standing back here, not drinking water, big mistake. Um, additionally, it is a refuge for any person who encounters it. As a family-based mental health therapist working with children and adolescents, I would like to advocate for the positive effects of green spaces on mental health outcomes. Access to green spaces have been linked to improved physical and mental health outcomes. This particular argument should be appealed to you, Mr. Duzeroff.
Is he listening?
I know. Um, this particular argument should appeal to you, um, since you have stated this evening that your role is to protect the residents of South Park Township. Um, green spaces provide opportunities for outdoor recreation, exercise, and relaxation, which can reduce stress, enhance mood, and promote overall, overall well-being. Green spaces also encourage social interaction and community cohesion, fostering a sense of belonging and connectedness among residents. Children and adolescents in 2024 are facing mental health crises at a concerning rate. The families I have worked with among our community have benefited from this, from time spent outdoors, especially during our sessions when I invite them to one of our favorite trails, along Sleepy Hollow, as it stands, the true majestic woods. When I was a teenager, attending South Park High School, which I recognize was at least with one of your children, I struggled with anxiety and found solace on this land. Secluded from the main drive, Oregon Drive, throughout the park, I was able to find my own sanctuary and grew my knowledge of the variety of plant life, mushroom foraging, and bird washing, bird watching, bird washing too, who knows? Um, a push for real approaches to managing the impacts of life, a free way to attend our special needs supports for the students you speak of. I also work closely with the school staff and see the actual lack of support within the schools currently. By preserving Sleepy Hollow, we are not only honoring our past, but also safeguarding our future and the environment for generations to come. Furthermore, transforming Sleepy Hollow into townhomes would irreversibly alter the character and charm of our community. Instead of tranquil nature walks and bird watching, we would be met with the hustle and muscle of suburban development. I'm breathing so loud this morning.
Just take your time.
I know, I'm like, I'm breathing slow, okay. I'm still hot too, oh my God. Um, we cannot let the allure of profit cloud our judgment and sacrifice the very essence of what makes our community unique. Overall, removing green space from a county park can have the far-reaching negative consequences for the environment, public health, recreational opportunities, and community well-being. It is essential to carefully consider the impacts of such actions and prioritize the preservation of green spaces for the benefit of current and future generations. In conclusion, the protection of Sleepy Hollow is not just a matter of sentimentality. It is a responsibility we owe to ourselves, our children, and the natural world. Let us stand together to ensure that Sleepy Hollow remains a sanctuary for all to enjoy, now and for years to come. And respectfully, please recognize your role in this position of power. Recognize the turnout to oppose this plan. Here are our voices. Why am I getting emotional? You needed a female to get emotional.
Yo, you're doing fine. You're doing fine.
Um, here are voices, the concern for our homes, the love of this beautiful land. It is obvious that based on the engineers and professionals that have provided resources to help you make your decision tonight, but have only shown what can be done. I think the question to ask yourself is, should it be done? I would like to push for you to oppose any preliminary recommendation for this plan's approval. Thank you.
I promise I'll be short. I am Carolyn Southginsley. I'm the chair of the Friends of South Park. And I have a couple incidents that I wanted you to read about. Um, in January of 2002, Allegheny County did a comprehensive master plan that was prepared by Wallace and Toad. It referenced Sleepy Hollow. It rep, it represented the Sleepy Ho, it represented the Sleepy Hollow Biological Zone. It stated that Sleepy Hollow is the largest and most intact area in South Park from a natural resource standpoint. Most of the woodlands in this area are in various stages of succession, resulting from a variety of past agricultural and agricultural practices. But the report goes on to recommend to the county to formally designate Sleepy Hollow Biological Zone as an open space reserve. An update on the master plan, which is once again recommended to formally designate Sleepy Hollow as a biological zone and an open space reserve. The Allegheny Park Ecological Assessment and Action Plan in South Park that was prepared in March of 2017 by the Western Pennsylvania Conservancy, in which Sleepy Hollow is mentioned 16 times. Two of the most significant areas are as follows. This is the most ecologically intact portions of the park that are centered around the largest block of forest that predated the formation of the park. The area centered around Sleepy Hollow and the forest communities on the flood plain of Sleepy Hollow and the nearby slopes are some of the most diverse and intact found within the park. And finally, this report also lists the pop, several populations of plant species that are rare in the state or the region and describes the wetlands that are located in Sleepy Hollow, all of which extend to 59 acres that are slated for this development. Again, the South Park Township Comprehensive Plan, which I'm sure many of you are involved in, which was adopted in February, February 12th of 2018, with significant input from the South Park residents, has as its number one goal, number one, to balance development with conservation to maintain the appeal and the quality of the community existing landscapes. I believe this group will see that their meeting will reflect the community's support for this issue. So, as you know, the township had previously requested approximately 10 acres from the park to help with stormwater management. We're concerned that the township, again, is going to ask to reduce our county park instead of increasing by adding new acres to it. Because as someone mentioned before, if we get the opportunity, Allegheny Land Trust has said they will certainly buy this portion of land and donate it to their. I didn't know about the things that we've done so far, but, um, and I did want to tell you that, uh, last year, on March 14th, the Friends of South Park passed a resolution. We recommend that South Park Township, Town, South Park Township Plan Commission reject the request to rezone Sleepy Hollow property, which it did, thank you very much. Uh, in addition to adversely affecting the natural beauty of the park and the surrounding forests, this development and the resulting population increase will create potential problems for park operations, including excessive littering, possible vandalism, given that the park is open till midnight, and God forbid disturbing our poor buffalo.
Is there anyone else from the township I know, this lady?
Go ahead. No, you go. You, you go first. You're, you're fine.
Paul Smith, 1009 Old Coast Road. Uh, I think we know very little still about this development as a community. We don't know what kinds of houses are going to go here. We know it's a zone, single-family, and we assume that's what it's going to be. But we don't know what these houses are going to look like. We don't know what the, the target price for these houses is, what kind of clientele they have, whether they're going to be for sale or for rent. We don't know any of those things at this point in time. You ought to know those point things before you make any decision. Particularly if you're concerned about our, as a community, and our position about this development. The previous go-around on Sleepy Hollow should have told this entire township government that this community really wants to preserve its green space. Whether or not it creates financial difficulties or not, we're aware of that. We're big boys and girls. We know that. We know that. And we know that this is an important property, and it's, it is, and it's a lure. It's hard to resist if you're in, in local government. We understand that. We understood that last year too. And we took the stance we did for even bigger development, with more tax revenue to come. We did those things. One thing, we don't know what this is about. Here are two lots, two single-family lots. We didn't know anything about that. He didn't talk about lots going there, but here it is, it's two family lots, we don't know. That was all, in the last go-around, land that couldn't be developed according to that developer. All that land, he rejected that, and all it would be was a water catchment. Now we've got something going. That creates the problem for all the close, close roads, lower close roads. A significant problem. And changes of that, that, that community very much, as Lauren had talked about already. We don't know what earthmoving is going to occur up there. The engineer admitted, he doesn't know yet what's going to go on. We know it's going to, there's going to be a, a green plant on that thing, except in a couple smaller areas, where there's a lot of slopes. And that's nice to say that, but that's, that's not really enough to meet the demands of this community over time. And it was clear, the community's exactly like last year. The new transparent supervisor candidates both pledged in their campaign docu, uh, literature that they were aware of that desire of the community and recognized it and supported it. This developer, we talked about his reputation. I, I have concerns about it too. We don't know things about, I said, about the economics, the audience, the types of houses, what they're going to be. We talked about, uh, Summit Station. It was a great tax bump boom. Again, last year's discussion of, of that development, it was clear the community views that development as maybe one of the biggest mistakes that was ever made. It's ugly, no one cares for it. And that's, and that, that, I understand, I understand, I'm not criticizing the fact that it was built. You made a good case, you saved it. But what we got, what it looks like, it subtracts from the value of this community.
Yes, it does.
And they give us more people, but it, it doesn't help us, this community, and show a new visitor, oh yeah, you're really concerned about the environment you live in.
Excellent.
Like I said, you don't know anything about this development, really, at this point in time. So, I don't see how you can take any meaningful action in life except to postpone this action and take seriously the demands of this community, this regard. Now, you said that you've had prior experience, this, this successful, was your mind, or at least, at least good, with cooperation with this developer in past. But this developer, you know, is so great. He didn't put the right name on his package they sent to you all. Well, they had to correct the name as the entity was actually making this proposal. Okay? So, they just figured, hey, we'll keep you shit, and you know you want the tax money? We, you'll still give it to us. That's, that's the attitude I perceive from this developer at this point, at this time, and his attitude. And not only did he not give you the right name, the notice that was posted for this property on South Park, on Sleepy Hollow Road, names a different company requesting this action. So, in effect, maybe this meeting notice was improper and inadequate. Maybe get down to it there too. So, anyway, this community clearly expressed its desire as to what this property should be. With big boys, we know it's a zone R2, it's subject to development, it's, it's, it's single-family development. But that, that isn't the whole picture. Just because it said, oh, well, we're giving you a, you know, an R2 zone development, that's not the end of the picture here. You have an obligation beyond that to make sure that this meets the desires of the community and it satisfies all requirements of the, of... and it satisfies all requirements of our zoning rules. Right now, you don't anticipate any need for waivers, but we all know you will. The last developer had to have a waiver that you approved tonight. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Whitney Gaspire, 962 West Chester Road. I don't have anything formal prepared, but I did just want to ask a couple of questions, I guess. In agreement with the comprehensive plan and what you see as the best thing for the community, whenever developers do bring this proposal to us, is there any feedback or suggestions made about incorporating any trees? Or for instance, for every one tree that you tear down, you have to plant two? Anything along those lines? Okay. All right, so that's my first question.
Great question.
Thank you. What's that?
He said there's no ordinance.
No ordinance, okay, okay. And I just want to clarify for my own sake, too, and anybody else in the room. Everybody that's on this board right now is appointed correct by the Board of Supervisors. That's my understanding, right? Except for you, Mr. Sable, who you are also a school board member.
Correct.
Now, you did mention quite a few things about the school board, or about the school district and taxes and things like that. And I just wanted to point out, too, that, you know, those businesses and the plant that you listed, all the employees there do pay school taxes. That's, that's one thing that's...
If they live in the community. If they live in the community, they pay real estate property tax. But the nettle, you talking about the nettle plant?
Yeah.
They pay wage tax. Where they live. Where they live, if they live in our community, they pay it to us, that's correct.
Okay, but when, anytime we work outside of our community, we do still pay a tax to that township that we're in. I mean, I always have.
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, I worked in Upper St. Clair, and I paid Upper St. Clair tax.
Upper St. Clair sends it to South Park.
Okay. All right. Okay, well, that's good to know. Now, you mentioned, and I don't know if this was just for clarification, Mr. Sable, just for the room, but you, as of beginning, you asked Mr. Bonnady or somebody if this landed question is actually part of South Park Township or part of Allegheny County Park.
Correct.
But we do understand, and you are aware, that it is not part of Allegheny County Park. Okay? Because you listed a bunch of numbers. Now, all of Allegheny, all of South Park that is within Allegheny County, all of, you know, the part that people come to know, part of that is in Bethel Park as well.
Correct.
Okay, there we go. So not all 2,000...
No, the 2,000 acres, it's only 1,400 in South Park. 1,400 acres in South Park of Allegheny County, South Park is in South Park Township. It's still tax exempt, I don't care. It's only 1,400 acres. I'm not going to argue with you over that. I understand. It's small.
So, okay, and I guess I was wondering, too, whenever these sort of situations come up, I know that there's different policies and regulations as far as when you all can get together and discuss a matter. But when you're given the information, just as the rest of us are, that it's Majestic Woods, it's Frank Zokets, the engineer is, you know, Wetzel, et cetera, you have the ability, or you're able to Google things yourself, correct? And come to the meeting with some information about it, right? Okay. So then, whenever people say stuff like, "We know there's things floating around about Frank", I feel like that is really underrepresenting the true nature of what a very simple, free Google search that's full of public information does show, okay? And I think it's important to mention that there's been lawsuits for him not paying school taxes, okay? There's been lawsuits for him, yes, yes. That's available via Google. There's lawsuits for him and his contractors damaging people's property. And then not simply repairing the broken, the damage, or offering them money, but taking them to court, okay? And then taking them back, taking the court to court and saying that it was an unfair judgment, and it continuing to escalate. Now, I'm not sure what the financial position is of South Park or who we have on retainer. I mean, I do know who we have on retainer, I think. But I'm not sure that, do you, when you know this going into something, that there's a litigious individual, do you appropriate funds in the event that there might be something that goes wrong? That's what I'm curious about. Because otherwise, where does that money come from? And is it, at one point or another, does South Park Township have to just sort of back out and, and deal with it, you know? I think, too, you know, an instance of him suing a towing company in Jefferson Hills for a tow truck that turned over, or a big truck, you know, a big construction vehicle turning over in someone's yard, and gasoline spilling down the hill, and the police arriving on scene with an ambulance and a fire truck, and then it took the towing company ten hours to get that vehicle out of that man's yard. Okay, so when he got the truck back, you know, the towing company gave him a bill for $10,000, and he said, "No way", you know? And the towing company said, "Well, I gotta pay ambulance, I gotta pay fire, I gotta pay, I gotta pay my own bills, and this was, this took ten hours, et cetera." And he took him to court, you know? And then continued to go back and challenge the decision of the courts. So I feel like this is somebody that you would not want on your board. You wouldn't want this person on your board. You probably wouldn't want this person on your street. And this isn't an attack on this man. This is the owner of the company, the one who makes all the decisions. Do you know what I'm saying? And so, if, if we know that this is this person's history, and that maybe there's a history of changing contractors after a job has started, or suing the contractor whenever they're negligent, you know, whenever Frank is actually negligent, turning it around to the contractors, turning it around to the engineers, turning it around to zone attorneys, I feel like that's a massive liability. And if you don't care about the buffalo, and if you don't care about the green space, and you don't care about what anybody's, and I know that's not, you know, being hyperbolic, whatever, if you don't care about any of those things, but you do care about money, and you care about the taxes, and those things... And I feel like...
I do care about you, I think. And if you're aiming down at me...
I said if. I said if. I said if. If you do not care if those other things aren't as high in your priority list as are in line with it, would you let me finish, please?
Let her finish!
Let her finish! You talk, let her finish! You talk, let her finish!
Okay. I'm just saying, if, if by chance, if by chance, those issues... If by chance, the issues or the concerns of the residents and environmental issues aren't as important, then considering South Park Township as a business, which you have to, right, when you're making decisions? Right. So if you're thinking about the bottom line and the money, then it doesn't seem like a very wise decision, is what I'm trying to say. And I guess I was just wondering along the lines of, you know, people mentioning the new school that's being built in Bethel Park. Now, I don't know of these kinds of decisions either. I'm sure you're not required to, but I didn't know if it was regular practice to maybe correspond with, you know, a neighboring district and say, "Hey, look, we've got this development here that might be coming up. What are your thoughts on it?". Or, you know, like the South Hills Council of Government, which people here are a member of, whether there's any discussion about if they can see any sort of ramifications. Not to get anyone's permission or approval, but just general feedback, you know? I'm just not sure what kind of...
Probably a better question for township, too.
Okay. Okay.
Because they're elected to represent the residents.
Okay.
So I think it's a great question.
Okay.
Probably more appropriate than supervisors.
Okay. And so, just like the last couple of things here. So you, you said that you are able to research these people. Then is there any kind of, I guess, sort of vetting process? As far as this person has a certain history? Maybe we want to take a second look? Maybe we want to take a deeper look at this issue before any kind of preliminary approvals go forth? Or little circumstances like Wetzel being the engineer on the prior development that was struck down? And whether there's any sort of, you know, acknowledgement of that, that that is an important detail, I think? The other thing, sorry.
Can you answer that? Can you answer to that?
I'll answer your question.
Okay.
Okay, so, you asked like four questions in the last thirty seconds.
I'm so sorry. The last thing, should I say my last thing and then sit down, or should I wait? Whatever you do. I just wanted to say, too, you know, you had said, Mr. Bonnady, about there have been no problems with the villas. And I think, by the way, saying that there has been no problems with the villas, even though we're very, very lucky, we know that that is not very common for this developer. So I feel like in that case, it's a little bit more anecdotal to say that we had gotten lucky. But you had mentioned about, there's nothing, there are not any problems with villas. But then, we do know that there's been significant flooding on Snowden Road, correct?
At times, yes.
Okay. So much... Yeah. I can't hear what she's saying exactly, but... So we know that that is the case, and that there's had to be, you know, remediation involved in that with personal, with, you know, property owners. So it's not nothing that's been happened, you know? That's it. I think that's all I have. But if you want to respond...
If you have a question to handle...
Well, which question?
When you ask like a bunch, that's what I...
I know, yeah.
Adrian, let me just, let me apologize. I have to visit the restroom because I'm on medication. I apologize for...
That's no problem. Honestly, I really don't mean to upset anybody, but I do think it's a, it's a little bit of a conflict of interest just because, in the one instance with you, Mr. Sable, and again, no disrespect intended, just because you are on the school board, and I feel like, you know, maybe this, this group of people right here is supposed to look after the best interests of the community members, which of course includes the children. But the school board stuff and the taxes, all of that, you know, that's a separate issue in my mind, just because then you're going to, at one point or another, maybe end up advocating accidentally for one thing over the other. Do you know what I mean? Okay.
Funny, funny. I'm not on the school board.
Right. That's good.
Taxes stink, okay? I pay a lot, all right? My taxes have never gone down. That's not, that's not even a consideration for me personally while I'm sitting here. I've said this before meetings, and I'll say it again. I have two things, two criterias that I look at mostly. One, foremost, is safety. Safety includes neighbors, the development, the road, children, things like that. That is my number one priority, is to keep this township safe. Second of all, also, is what this person coming forward to me, is what they have, is it all legal? You know? It is America, people do have rights. Okay? I look at, is what they're giving to me legal? That's my second thing. But taxes have never been an issue. I've never considered that at a vote, ever. And yes, I do Google things. And yes, I have probably, I get emails. I'm not on social media. I'm on Twitter, but not anything else that I'm going to see this. I just follow some high school sports on Twitter. I did Google all this. I received thirty emails, you know? And I know, I do want to say that I knew probably, I thought I was going to know everything that everyone in the audience was going to come forward this evening and speak about. But I got to say, I was blown away by some of the stuff you guys said. And you don't realize, and I, you know, I knew the buffalo was going to be the issue. I was prepared for the buffalo. And that's, you have a righteous cause. But I knew things like that. And like so many other stuff, I'm just blown away by. And I commend all of you. You guys do an excellent job.
Is there any, anyone else from the township that would like to speak about something that we have not discussed?
I just want to make one comment. There's been three waterline breaks on Sleepy Hollow this past month. And it was after the drilling that they're beyond that. I don't know if the lady was aware of that. I don't want to say what it was. Very significant. And the road is mess now. From the rains, and from the...
Good evening. Yes, your name is Raymond Stein, I'm on the side, and she... I live on Berryman Avenue. I wasn't actually planning on speaking tonight, but the young lady before me mentioned something. I'm an engineer, I do infrastructure. So the one thing I know that when we design things, when you put a house in, it takes twenty-two contractors to build that house. So let's assume there's a hundred and eight houses. That's twenty-two hundred and thirty-six trips into that plan. That's one contractor at one time. So now, we take things like this gentleman had mentioned, oh, they're going to look at the storm pipe at the end of the road and take a picture of it or something. We send a, McMoly, for instance, we send a dump truck down the road to McMoly. We have to have a million-dollar bond before that dump truck leaves. So why don't we, we know they have a history of not paying bills, skipping out, of doing anything like that. Why don't we say, because I live on Berryman. Berryman, Stoltz, all of it, these are twenty-five mile an hour roads, Stewart, you know, that's a thirty-five. You're going to put triaxles down there, you're going to put everything down these roads. You're worried about kids, worried about joyous horses. You know, this is going to be insanity, and you got to put them over that little cull roof. Okay, the cull roof breaks. Then you go to this gentleman and says, "Hey, you got a break", he goes, "Eh, not my issue." You know, I cannot see this play going forward, let me say that. But let's say it does. I say you put something, what does it cost to replace that cull roof? Three million dollars? Pick a number. Fine, give them a bond, hold that bond in ESCO for five years. You know, make it, so it doesn't come back on me. We've all talked about taxes. My taxes are yours, yours, everybody's. That's a given. Would I pay five dollars extra not to have this plan in here? Absolutely. So having said that, but having said that, I'm not going to pay five dollars extra because he skipped out.
Right.
So let's just, like, please, keep my family safe, keep all these families safe. I see joyous horses every day in my life. Just think of us. You know, I don't care if he makes a dollar, I really don't. You know, my, I've lived in that house for forty-five years. You know what I'm saying? I'm not going anywhere. So, yes, I stand up here emotional, saying like, this is a place that I've seen for my whole life. So, thank you.
Ross, can I make a comment?
Yeah. We've heard a lot of information here tonight. And as Adrian said, it's very important information. There are a lot of things I heard here, too, that I never would have considered. But I think we need to give an opportunity, not at this meeting, but because of the things that you've heard, Mr. Wensole, tonight, and how do you address those situations? So that we can hear, to be fair, where you stand for this. And moving forward, I think that the comments that were made, and Tim, the comments that you made about the county, the county damn well better get that information to us.
They absolutely will. They have till April 10th.
I'm going to rely, I'm going to rely on you to make sure that happens.
I'll surely do that.
I think one of the things we have the option to do is to consider tabling the information. So I want you both to keep something in mind. As Adrian said, the legality of this is, if they're meeting all of the requirements that the township has in place, we have to recognize that. Because if we do something and they have litigation against us because we didn't take the action, that could possibly happen. So I want you to be aware of that. We sat here the last time, and Mr. Carmen spoke very genuinely from his heart about how he had that property, and that was his retirement plan. He, and for those of you who were here, he reminded us that people that were on that property, in effect, were trespassing, and he was concerned about the liability that he had on that property. So there are some things that he said, unfortunately, he's not here to be able to reiterate that to us. But those things still are in the mix of all of this. Yeah, I am concerned about money. I am concerned about the school district, and I am concerned about the taxpayers. But it's not going to come at the expense of understanding your concerns. The concerns of erosion or landslides occurring, and all of that. But I think we need, we owe them the opportunity, and you owe them an opportunity to hear what their replies are.
No.
And to do that, we would have to take action tonight to table. And there are, there are two actions on the agenda that will allow us to do that. We've heard you. We understand your concerns. That's the purpose of this session, is for you to inform us, as we try to inform you, of where you stand. So with that said, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with you, I think we're okay to move forward. I'm going to make a motion to table, but I don't want to be ahead of the, get out in front of my speed here regarding this. So...
I'd second that. So there are, so just as a reminder for everyone, so we have two items on the agenda. One is, is the paperwork complete? The other, I'm just telling you... The other one is for preliminary approval. Regardless of what is decided, because I can't speak for that, I don't know how, I know how two of the members are going to vote. Regardless of what is decided, if it is decided to approve or to not approve, it will go forward to the Board of Supervisors. If we vote to table it, it will come back to the Planning Commission next month. We will have presentation again by the engineer. We may have some different information from the engineer at that point, and we may have some additional information also from the county. So, as I said, there's two items. So the first one is for the paperwork. Is the application complete? So we need a motion to accept, not accept, or table this preliminary application for a major subdivision as being complete per the subdivision and land development ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to table this action at this time.
I will second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is carried. The second item is, we need a motion to recommend, not recommend, or table this application for preliminary approval for a major subdivision to be located along Sleepy Hollow Road, lot, lot block number 771-F-75.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to table this motion at this time.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is carried. The next regular meeting of the Township of South Park Planning Commission meeting will be Wednesday, April 24th at 7:00 PM. Put it in your calendars now. We need a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?